The broadcast is now starting. All attendees are in listen-only mode.
Good evening. I'm Good Marie Hansen, Superintendent of Orange Unified School District, and we apologize for the delay. We had some problems starting up the broadcast of our evening tonight. So, welcome to the Orange Unified School District's Orange High School feeder-area town hall meeting for the facilities master plan. We're very pleased to have all of you here. And for this evening, if you have any need for Spanish translation, there is a phone number and a conference ID that you can call into to get Spanish translation. So just as an introduction, I'd like to say that I'm really pleased that we have our school board members here. We have Board President Kathy Moffett, who I think will be joining us shortly, Vice President Andrea Yamasaki, Board Clerk Chris Erickson, Board Member Anna Page, and Board Member Angie Rumsey. Want to thank them for their involvement, for participating in this event, to hear from our community about our facilities master plan. They, of course, will have another study session after we complete all four of these master planning town halls, and then they will also be the final ones to make the decision on the adoption of the facilities master plan. So it's wonderful to have their participation, to hear from the community. So this evening, this is a culmination of about a year and a half of work. We started in 1920 with our facilities master planning process. It was part of our strategic plan for the Orange Unified Edge, our 1920 to '25, our five-year strategic plan, to implement many priorities for the district, one of them being a long-range facilities master plan for our elementary and middle schools. As you know, we currently have a master plan for our high schools with Measure S funding. Thank you to the community for supporting us in those efforts. And we've already had one opening of our STEM Center at Orange High School. Very exciting. So this process is really to focus on the K-8 educational programs and our aging facilities, and to envision the future of how we could transform those facilities into 21st century learning centers and meet the needs of our students in future generations. So there's been a lot of work that's been done with the Facilities Master Planning Committee that met in 1920. Over the course of five or six meetings, ninety different participants from different stakeholders gave input to the process. We had a board study session in March. We hit COVID, and we ended up having to go into emergency distance learning, and it did slow down this process somewhat, but we have continued with the various stakeholder groups, as well as continuing to meet with our site-level user group teams, collecting data. And we're really pleased with our partners from LPA that this evening they're able to present, in collaboration with our staff, how far we've come in some conceptual drawings based on our goals and objectives and the vision for the master plan. So with that, I'd like to ask Mr. Rivera and Mr. Harvey and Yimasara Guerra if either of them would like to say a few words before we hand it over to our facilitator, Sam Lim and his team from LPA. So, Mr. Rivera?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Hanson. Well, first of all, welcome to our presentation and updates of what the master plan is. We've been at this process for a year and a half and have invested thousands of hours, man-hours, of updating our records. The last time we updated our master plan was back in 2003, '04, so it's been a while, and much has happened during that time. So we've updated our education specs and now are reflecting what those specifications would look like in their classrooms, so that way we provide our kids the best learning environment for them to flourish. I want to thank our facilities team in this work, which has taken the lead in helping through this process. So, Mr. Harvey, can you provide an update?
Sure, Mr. Rivera. I just want to say thank you. Excuse me. I just want to say thank you to our Facilities Master Plan Committee, who, like Mr. Rivera said, put in many, many hours. In the beginning of this process, we were all able to meet in person. We even had a meal together and were able to do things in a more normal way in terms of facilities planning. But obviously, with the pandemic, we had to shift gears, but we didn't stop moving forward. We had virtual meetings that went through the summer and now culminated in the fall and here for these town hall meetings. So thank you so much for all the people. There are a lot of these people are hopefully on the call today, at least from the Orange feeder. What you won't see this evening is a whole lot of information on the Orange High School site that has a separate master plan in itself that was created as part of Measure S in 2016 and '17. And that master plan is now, as you can see on the campus of Orange High School, in full swing. As Dr. Hanson mentioned, our first STEM Center opened in November. So we're very, very pleased about the way that that turned out. And we have a Phase II project at Orange High School starting up next school year. So we're really excited about that as well. So beyond what you'll see tonight, those are the things that are happening on the Measure S project. And we really, again, thank you all for joining us, and so sorry that we had the technical difficulties and we're a little bit late this evening. So I'll turn it over to Yimasara Guerra, who's been our quarterback for the facilities master plan and has done an amazing job coordinating with our architect, LPA, in the separate. So Yimasara, do you want to take it over and introduce our guests?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Harvey. Again, I'm Yimasara Guerra. I'm the Facilities Planning Analyst for the district. So I have the pleasure of introducing our presenters today. So leading the effort tonight would be Sam Lim, who's the Associate Managing Director for this project, Andrea Pippen, who is the Educational Facilities Planner, as well as Erin Runyon, who's IT Specialist, and Sabrina Lehman, who's going to be starting off the presentation for us tonight, Project Manager.
Great. Thank you, Yimasara. I really appreciate it. And thank you and welcome, everyone. As we said, we'd like to sort of move it along. I'll be quick because we want to get to the meat of this meeting, but I wanted to sort of just run through the agenda really briefly. So we'll start off with our town hall and what the purpose of this evening is and what we'd like to share. I'll spend a couple of minutes on meeting protocol, just to make sure that we can all engage and that those of you that have joined us this evening have an opportunity, then the ability to sort of speak and also ask questions. We'll go through the FMP process summary, talk about that process a little bit, and schedule where we are in that schedule and what to expect moving forward. The OUSD's vision for innovation and how that will be reflected in what you'll see later on in today's presentation. We'll talk through the ed specs and how those concepts for the future ed specs now roll into the diagrams that we'll see. Next steps for school sites committees and how we can engage with you all further in the process, because there will be many other opportunities to hear from folks that are on this call tonight. And finally, we'll get to the exciting part, which is our school site draft diagrams. And this is sort of conceptual, first look at some of the concepts that we're looking at for the school sites in this feeder. Next slide. So the purpose of tonight's meeting is really to ensure that we're looking long-term. What we're discussing this evening are not really related to short-term reopenings, but truly looking at a five-to-10-year plan. So we're looking out into the future and envisioning what that can be. The first drafts that we'll be sharing this evening are, as I mentioned, conceptual first drafts. They're looking at a first pass, given what we've gathered, the information we've gathered today, and all the information that we've spent sort of synthesizing in the last several months from the year-and-a-half process we've been in and sort of presenting them this evening for your first look. If you would like, we would love it if you would participate in this evening's conversation. There's some ways to do that that I'll share with you in a moment. So, next slide here. Most importantly is our orange icon on your dashboard. That will expand and contract the control panel. The control panel will show you the most, the second most important icon there is the little hand button. That's raise your hand. So if you'd like to speak and you'd like to raise, click that icon. It raises the hand to the organizer and lets us know that you'd like to engage and you'd like to speak. And you can also type in questions in the question box below. This evening, as we have questions come in, we will have members who are presenting, both from the district and from LPA, responding to questions. So I would encourage you all, as you ask them, keep the question box open and you'll see responses come in. And finally, and most importantly is, and what we'd like to emphasize tonight, is that your voice matters. And the truly, for this to be a successful endeavor for everyone, we really would like to hear everyone's thoughts as we go through tonight. There will be two opportunities for live questions and answers. We'll talk a little halfway through and at the end. But I will hand it over now, next slide please, to Erin. We're going to do our first quick icebreaker question to get us started tonight and get everyone a little warmed up. So our question for tonight is, which hobby did you pick up in 2020? So we have baking and cooking, hiking, fitness, reading, gardening, and art painting. So Erin's opened up the polls, so if you'd like to submit your answer, and we'll see where we land.
If you're viewing this and having a hard time selecting an option, it may be because you're in full-screen mode. So click the double box up at the top corner, top-right corner of your screen to exit full-screen mode to be able to participate in this icebreaker poll question.
Okay, it looks like the first two options are pretty much running hand-in-hand here. They're quite the tie. We have about 65% of the participants who have voted. We're going to wait for it to level off in just a moment, and then we'll go ahead and close the polls. All right, we're about at 75% and 78%. All right, it looks like we're slowing down, so I am going to go ahead and close the polls and we'll share our results.
All right. Well, that's, it looks like hiking and fitness was eked out a little higher than our baking and cooking, which is good to know. It sounds like we have lots of active folks in this, in this group. So I'd like to turn it over now to Sam Lim and get us going with our first main slide of tonight's presentation.
Sam, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Sorry about that. Thank you very much, Sabrina and Erin. Those are fantastic choices. Although now that I'm looking back at it, I'm wondering why we didn't have a selection for binging on Netflix, which is probably how I spent most of my 2020 working from home last year. So again, thank you very much to everyone here for participating and being part of tonight's town hall meeting. We're very excited to have you here. Just, I'd just like to spend a few minutes to talk about the facilities master plan process and where we are in the schedule and what our next steps might be. So as Dr. Hanson mentioned, this is a calendar, if you will, of the entire facilities master plan schedule. If you look towards the left-hand side of the calendar, we started in about August of 2019. And if you scroll over to the right side of the calendar, that's when we anticipate finalizing and submitting the final master plan for approval by the Board of Education towards the end of the spring of this year. Currently, we're in January of 2021, which is represented by that vertical dashed red line there. Thank you. And towards the fall of last year, we were busy and hard at work at finalizing the educational specifications, as well as putting together the conceptual diagrams for the master plans for each of your school sites, and which, those are what we intend to share with you tonight at our town hall meeting. And then our next step will be to have our one-on-one meetings with our school site committee representatives. That is going to occur towards the end of February. So there's probably some of you that are already part of the school site committees. And if there are some of you that are interested in participating in some of these meetings, we could certainly talk about that during our discussion tonight as well. Excuse me. So next slide, please. So in order to have a better understanding of why the school district is proceeding and pursuing this master plan, we need to have an understanding of the challenges that we're all facing. So we all love our schools, but at the same time, we have to acknowledge that these are aging sites with infrastructure that was constructed decades ago. And even though the school district has been doing a tremendous job of maintaining our facilities, we also need to acknowledge that there are definitely improvements that our facilities require. And it's not just the physical conditions and the maintenance of the existing facilities that are critical to success, but we also need to recognize that some of these sites that were designed decades ago are no longer educationally appropriate for the next generation of learning and teaching modes. Some of the other challenges we're facing include a decline in enrollment. And many of us have observed that surrounding districts are rebuilding their own facilities and creating their own innovative programs. So we need to be able to compete with these other school districts and private schools for students. And because of these challenges that we're facing, we need to be ready and prepared with our own plans that identify our most critical needs for each of our school sites. Next slide, please. So what are the school district's guiding principles that have led the way for the facilitation of our master plan? So first and foremost, students are at the center of the district's mission. The district wishes to embrace the guiding principles and translate its initiatives to its facilities. The district wishes to engage the community in a process to foster ownership and support. The district also wishes to develop an actionable, long-term plan that is grounded in the district's strategic vision and that's built on the previous accomplishments and successes. We want to create a positive student experience through the development of innovative, adaptable, and high-quality learning environments. And we want to construct equitable, safe, welcoming, and inclusive facilities that cultivate student, staff, and community pride. Last but not least, we want to promote stewardship through the development of a responsible plan based on integrity and excellence. In other words, we want to have a plan that is both actionable and realistic. So, next slide, please. Go to the next slide. So how do we translate these guiding principles into goals that are actionable for the master plan? So firstly, the district wishes to be innovative in its strategies for both planning and the programs that it wishes to offer. So we're going to be taking a deeper dive into these strategies as both Andrea and Joe share the diagrams that we'll be looking at in a few minutes here. The district wishes to provide educational options for its students within their communities and to retain resident students and expand middle school enrollment. The district wishes to increase the capture of private school and out-of-district students and also decrease the West Side to East Side student movement. And to be able to deliver this via the efficient use and the good stewardship of community dollars. Next slide. So in order for us to facilitate the master plan process, we needed to make a few assumptions. And there may be some terms here that may sound a little new or different to some of our audience members. But again, these will become much more clear when we begin sharing the diagrams with you tonight. So the district wants to be able to provide equity and choice to its constituents. So some of the campuses are identified as magnet campuses that are programs that have a program focus which draws district-wide. There are academy campuses that have a program focus which draws from within each of the feeder community boundaries. And in terms of the improvement levels or tiers, there are three tiers that have been identified. So Tier One is for the magnets and academies. Tier Two is for targeted enhancements, such as for shared gyms or shared MPRs for certain school sites. Tier Three is for modernizations, which are selected improvements at some of the school sites as well. In terms of the targeted enrollments for each of the types of the schools, for elementary schools, there'll be some that will have 420 students or two classrooms per grade. Some elementary schools with 630 students and three classrooms per grade. K-8 schools will have 900 students, and middle schools will have 700 or 900 students. Next slide. With regards to the categorization of the improvements, the tier improvements, we just want to be able to differentiate between what the tiers do and what these improvement tiers do not do. So the tiers do translate OUSD's innovative sites visions into proposals at the various campuses. They do organize sites into groupings by similar scope, program, and master plan approach. They do develop a unique plan for each campus based upon program and past improvement history. And they do recognize that funding for facilities improvements is not unlimited and that the district's culture of sharing will continue. So we mentioned a while ago, such as an example would be the shared MPRs or gyms. Conversely, the tiers do not infer a striation of projects based on priority or level of improvement specified. In other words, if there are sites that are identified as tiers two or three, this does not mean that there are any less of a priority for the district. The tiers do not identify a date for potential improvements to begin once funding has been secured. As we've mentioned previously, and we'll probably mention again later in the evening, the master plan identifies the needs, the specific needs of each school site. However, the identification of the funding sources, as well as the implementation of that, that will be a second step. The tiers do not dictate the approach to scope or budget differently between the various tiers. And the tiers do not create a standard improvement template, but instead promotes choice and variety within each feeder community. Next slide, please. So we are at the third of four scheduled town hall meetings. So we have the fourth one scheduled for next week. We certainly encourage you to attend that and participate, if you would like to as well. And with that, I believe I will pass the baton off to Joe Urban. Joe?
Sorry about that. Thank you, everyone, for attending this evening. My name is Joe Urban. I'm an Executive Director with the Orange Unified School District. And today, we're going to be going over some of those Tier One facilities, some of the innovation, innovative programs that we have proposed. And then I'll be showing you the feeder maps for each of the slices, each of the high school attendance boundaries, so that you can see that each of our slices have a Tier One Magnet School and a Tier One Academy. We're starting with the Orange High School feeder pattern. You can see our Tier One magnets is proposed to be at the Yorba site. We are proposing the possibility of converting Yorba to a kinder-through-eighth-grade arts magnet school, possibly even lottery and no attendance boundary, similar to the K-8 program at McPherson Magnets. I was the former principal of McPherson, so that kinder-through-eighth-grade offers a lot of opportunities for students. And the whole point of all of these magnets and academies is to give students choice throughout the district. And we have our Tier One academies. We have California Elementary, which would be a TK through sixth grade, which is adding one grade level, because currently it's TK through five. And that is our IInspire Dual Immersion Program, so it's an Apple Distinguished School, plus it is a dual-immersion Spanish program. And then our other academy is at the Lamson site. Lamson potentially becoming a TK-through-eighth-grade International Baccalaureate Academy. And again, I'll talk a little bit more in detail about what that program could entail. And then we have our targeted, our Tier Two Targeted Enhancement Schools. That includes Cambridge Elementary School, Bear Haven Elementary School, Richland Continuation High School, and Sycamore Elementary School. There would be a proposed new gym for the theater pattern to share at the Richland site. And as we are going through this presentation today, at the very end, we'll go over the specifics of each of these schools in the theater pattern, so you can see what is proposed. And then we have the Tier Three Modernized Schools. That includes Handy Elementary School, Palmyra Elementary School, West Orange Elementary School, and Portola Middle School. Okay, moving on to the next slide. So looking at those Tier One programs and what they could be, or in some cases already are, we will start with one of our academies, the California Elementary TK through sixth-grade dual-immersion and Apple Distinguished School. California Elementary will continue to have its current attendance boundary and will also continue to house the current grade levels. Well, currently it's a TK through fifth, so we would be adding a sixth grade. They are doing a 50/50 Spanish dual-immersion program. It's currently taught in two cohorts per grade level. And currently, our fifth graders are going to be moving to the middle school next year in that dual-immersion program. There is a K through 12th grade matriculation pattern in development to move these students in a dual-immersion environment through 12th grade. And in fact, next Thursday, we will be having a presentation on all the dual-immersion programs and explaining those kinder-through-12th-grade matriculation patterns. And all of those patterns are incorporated with a career and technical education focus, with the California Elementary focus being in that biotechnology realm. The school also does cultural events to bring in community around the language focus, including Dia de los Muertos and Dia de Reyes. And the California Elementary will continue to be designated as an Apple Distinguished School based on technology integration. Next slide. Another proposed academy would be at Lamson, TK-through-eighth-grade International Baccalaureate. This would be, once again, an academy with an estimated 300 students coming to Lamson, sixth or eighth grade. This would change possibly the current boundaries for sixth or eighth graders to stay at Lamson instead of moving to Portola. Those students would rotate through seven class periods. Those middle school students, sixth or eighth grade, they would have a math, science, language arts, history, P, and two electives. And those electives would have an IB focus, probably in the area of world languages. Students would complete my middle-year program personal projects as part of their IB experience, and then they would have a community event to explain about those passion projects as a culmination of the year. And they would participate with groups like Penn House Schools to get that international focus, where they work with schools around the world on a project. And the goal would be to become an international baccalaureate world school. Next slide. And then we have a Yorba Kinder Through-Eighth Grade Arts Magnet. So this would be the magnet for the Orange feeder pattern. Yorba would essentially no longer have its regular attendance boundary. So current middle school students could be moved between Saravilla and Portola. And then Yorba would be filled to capacity with three classes of each grade level, kinder through eighth grade. And this would probably be done on a lottery system, very similar to what we do at McPherson Magnet. We would add we would add arts-based programming, like kinder-through-eighth-grade dance, recruited technical education, elementary third-through-fifth, and middle school band, orchestra, and choir programs, elementary theatrical and musical productions at each grade level, visual arts and ceramics at all grade levels, and after-school clubs with an arts focus, like multi-generational after-school arts program, iMovie clubs, studio sessions, and possibly a Yorba dance troupe. We would envision having innovative spaces on campus, like showcases, galleries, where we can have several times per year where we can see student work. And again, all that subject matter will be taught through that arts magnet focus, similar to what we do at McPherson and then what we're proposing at two other magnet schools within the district. Next slide. So looking at the Canyon High School So looking at the Canyon High School theater pattern, just so everyone can see how these magnets and academies would work in all of the. Your patterns, we have our tier one academy, tier one magnet in the canyon pattern being at Crescent. Where they would become a TK through eighth grade biomedical magnets. And then our tier one academy will be running springs, being a TK through eighth grade international baccalaureate academy. With tier two targeted enhancements at Anaheim Hills Elementary School and Canyon Rim Elementary School. And then tier three modernize, modernization happening at El Rancho Charter, Canyon Hills and Imperial Elementary School. And you can see there will be a new gym for that theater pattern at Crescent. And then we have the El Medina High School theater pattern with your tier one magnet school being McPherson Magnet, which is already is in existence. Being a K eight. And then our tier one academy being Jordan Academy. Which again is already in existence TK through sixth grade dual immersion Spanish and computer science program. We have tier two targeted enhancements at Esplanade Elementary School, La Vida Elementary School and Panorama Elementary School. And then tier three modernization happening at Chapin Hills Elementary School, Linda Vista Elementary School, Santiago Charter Middle School. Prospect Elementary School and the Parkside Education Center. With a new gym proposed for McPherson Magnet as a shared facility for this theater pattern. And then finally, we have the Villa Park High School Theater Pattern Area. Our tier one magnet is proposed for the Taft site, the Taft becoming a kinder through eighth grade world language magnet program. And then we have tier one academy at the Olive site, Olive TK through sixth grade avid academy. And again, Olive has already done work with Olive becoming a avid distinguished school. And then we have our tier two targeted enhancements, including Mill Canyon Elementary School, Serrano Elementary School and Sarah Villa Middle School. We have our tier three modernized schools at Fletcher Elementary School and Villa Park Elementary School with a new gym proposed. At the Sarah Villa site to share with this theater pattern.
Great, thank you very much. Next slide, we'll be looking through some concepts for future. Educational specifications and then we'll look at the diagrams for specific school sites. Next slide. So the intent for the planning for the future portion of this presentation is to really just sort of give an overview of some of the conceptual ideas behind. The educational specifications moving forward and some of those updates might look like. Starting with the preschool and transitional kindergarten sites. With respect to this forward thinking vision, the A L C program will be planned to be within permanent classrooms. Transitional kindergarten, every elementary and K eight site will be planned to have one TK classroom. And elementary schools with a higher projected enrollment will get two TK classrooms. From a layout perspective, where we are looking at the combined and shared workroom between kindergartens. Support space and toileting for that are shared between the two classrooms. And then a dedicated kinder play area with shade structure. And looking at some concepts of sort of linking the indoor and outdoor space together for those for those areas. Next slide. Our special ed program, looking to plan for the inclusion model, which allows students to matriculate in the same school site. It aligns with the strategic plan of living our values. And every campus regardless of its current S T C needs will have a dedicated toileting facility with a lift for future flexibility. In looking at the plan, we look at that the moderate severe programs and other programs in the S T C. Program would have a dedicated focus room. We would look at providing additional storage and then flexible spaces that could be used in a variety of ways. In those in those classrooms. Next slide. The Learning Resource Center is a new sort of concept for us. It's looking at a model that includes all of the support spaces that are. That are dedicated on our sites, including speech, psychology testing rooms. Small R S P group space. And then support spaces to support those functions, including a conference space and flex room. And a dedicated flex room and sensory room. And what this truly does is it serves as a suite of offices with shared common spaces to provide student services with a purpose built home. So that they are intentional and located and planned as a suite rather than. Perhaps leftover spaces on school sites. Next slide. Thank you. Our media centers are looking to evolve the library forward thinking to look at evolving the library. Into a multimedia hub for activity. Looking at providing opportunities for quiet space in our quiet reading corner. But have a media center with group collaboration areas with flexible furniture. Along with our traditional library functions, a workroom and storage. And also a dedicated connection to the outdoors, to what we are calling the outdoor learning court. It could potentially host concurrent activities of varying noise levels, large groups, a reading and storytelling nook and the research and tech zone. Next slide, please. Collaboration spaces, indoor and outdoor spaces that are adjacent to our classrooms to serve as extensions of the classroom. Highly flexible that allows the space to shift and accommodate varying groups, varying sizes. And and individual activities. A visual connection from the classroom to the collab also provides easier supervision and promotes the use of that space. And provides and promotes interdisciplinary and learner centered instruction. In looking at the diagrams, you'll see that we have a variety of spaces that are dedicated under this program. We have smaller collaboration spaces that are highly flexible, larger ones that might be shared. And then also the concept of an outdoor learning court or outdoor collab. Which would provide opportunities for outdoor learning, but also the ability for teachers to be able to pull out small groups. Or pull out the entire classroom depending on the needs of that particular lesson or that day. Next slide. Vapa, which is our visual and performing arts at the elementary and K eight level. We're looking to consolidate those uses and a dedicated space. At the elementary school, we would look to have an art area, dedicated orchestra and strings. And band areas that are all co-located and with access to another one of these outdoor collabs. That give them an ability to spill out into the outdoors and and sort of create that indoor outdoor connection. At the K eight schools, there's the addition of some additional storage space and and opportunities to sort of help. Support some of these spaces as those classes are are larger. And in the inclusion of practice rooms that allow for smaller group pullouts for both band and orchestra strings. Next slide. At the middle school level, we also look at how that also supports the art program. So we also have a focus on two D, three D and digital art. So in schools where that is a focus and middle schools where that is a focus, we would look at providing a three D. Space, two D and digital art labs with associated support spaces. A gallery space for students to showcase their work. And again, that connection to the outdoor learning areas. In schools with a music and drama focus, similarly, we would look at providing those three separate spaces. That are flexible in nature, but also have the practice rooms and a connection to the outdoors. Next slide. The Innovation Lab is a sort of a new space in the sense that it's looking at providing again, a dedicated space for exploratory. Hands on and project based learning. This is to be paired with the after school programs as the home base for enrichment programs where possible. The character of these spaces would likely include flexible furniture, areas for small group breakouts. And then the support spaces that would be needed to sort of support the very, the variety of programs that would be provided in these innovation labs. Again, with a with a dedicated. Sort of interaction with the outdoors. Next slide. The after school programs are provided one dedicated twelve hundred square foot home base classroom that would be near parking for easy access. Share additional classrooms after school to accommodate growing numbers of students. But this would be the the home base, that center space. Colate the home base classroom, as I mentioned earlier, with the Innovation Lab when possible. With an access to restrooms in addition to phone systems that can be self sustaining. And then for campuses, one per feeder area will serve as the care camp, cares camp hub for that region. And again, we're looking at providing sort of more flexible space, collaboration space again with that connection to the outdoors. Next slide. And we'll take a pause now and open up to questions and our question and answer poll. Let me take a look if we have any questions. And.
Do you have one? We do have one question which has been answered regarding the availability of the presentation tonight. This will be posted on the district's website possibly by tomorrow. And other two, I believe, have already been posted on the website as well.
And I just wanted to, I just wanted to mention also, Sam, sorry Sam, to just back up on the educational specs. Because this is the orange feeder, I'll just mention, and Orange High School's building is completed. You're going to see this in full force at Orange High School. We have a special living skills area for our severe moderate students that that has been set aside, that's on campus, that's fully. We had a similar program there before, but it didn't have the integration of bathrooms that can handle hoyer lifts and all this, all these things. So we're actually putting these things into place now. And so you, if you have a chance to tour the site, see the video that we put together for the opening. Please check those areas out so you can see how that really looks. And we were talking about chemistry labs that are twenty two hundred square feet. That have a lot more offering than other districts around us. So that's the kind of innovation and the kind of standard that we want to get to. And you could see that at play with measure S. So just wanted to put a plug in for the building.
Sounds great.
Thank you. We're, we're getting a few more questions here. So we do want to be able to mind, to be mindful of everyone's time as well. So we can probably take maybe two or three of the questions. We will have another Q and A opportunity at the end of the discussion. But let's, let's read some of these. So from Maureen Echult. Does the plan include the replacement of aging portables? So Sabrina or Andy, would you like to respond to that with the plans?
Go ahead.
Scott, you you popped up. Would you like to?
Yes.
We're eager to answer.
Yes, yes is the answer to the question. We, we will look to replace all portables as many as we can with permanent buildings. That's the goal. It's the goal now in our, in our plans and it's the goal moving forward as well. So.
Okay. The next question. Will tier three elementary feeders be getting any modernizations or upgrades are only tier one and tier two? And the answer to that is all tiers will have some level of modernizations to them. But again, maybe Scott, you'd like to expand a little bit on that?
Sure. So when we talk about modernization, it just means bringing the the campus or bringing the facilities up to the current building code. Meaning that everything's going to be accessible for all people, that it's what we call ADA accessible. You have all the the windows, H V A C, all those things, the the lighting has to meet new standards. To what we call Title twenty four in the in the California building code. So all that goes into place as part of modernization. And so you'll see those H V A C systems and windows, ceilings and all of that replaced to meet new standards. So that's what modernization means. And and some level like Sam mentioned at each one of those tier three sites. So you may have a tier three site like a Sycamore Elementary that you may see that some things may. Or West Orange that two different, two different situations there where Sycamore has had some modernization. So you won't see the high level of modernization that you'd see at a Sycamore because they've already had that. At West Orange, you may see a very high level because they've just never been touched. So modernization and and tiers, like Sam mentioned in the beginning, don't necessarily mean that we're spending more money at one site. Than the other, if it's a higher tier.
Thank you, Scott. Our next question from Leanna Sears. I believe this question refers to Orange High School if I'm not mistaken. So is is that correct? That the question is, are we going to make some updates to the rooms, facilities in the band orchestra choir art? Dance classrooms at Orange in order to support our students who will be coming in that the theater is beautiful, but our classrooms are very much lacking still. So I I believe I'm correct in assuming that this question is in regards to the high school. And this meeting that and discussion that we're having tonight and the master plan is specifically for the elementary and middle schools. As Scott has already mentioned, there's a separate master plan, I'm sorry, measure of improvements that are occurring. At all four of the district's high schools currently. The next question is what is meant when you say tier three modernization? I believe Scott Harvey has already responded to that. Maybe we can use this as the the last question for now so that we can continue moving forward. Will, this is from Stephen Glass. Will transportation be available for students slash families interested in programs? Outside of the current feeder area. So Scott, would you be able to take that one as well?
I would defer to Mr. Rivera. Yes, we haven't had that level of discussion regarding the, any offering of transportation. But in cabinet, we can discuss that and make a determination and provide that information. At a later time when the decision has been made, also discussion with our governing board.
Yeah, just backing up Sam, just to, just to answer that high school question because we want to, we want to make sure that people get their, their questions answered. But for for Orange High School, we will be updating the band room as part of phase two. Choir is in the eight hundred building. It's not in the plan at this point for measure S, but could be in future endeavors. But the band room for sure will be updated as it's right next to an area that we will be demolishing and needs to be renovated. In order to be brought up to code for band. So hopefully that, Mrs. Sears, I hope that answers your question.
Thank you very much, Scott. So like we mentioned, we will have another opportunity towards the end of the presentation. To take more of the questions and answers, but in an effort to continue moving forward. We would like to share and hopefully this next portion of the presentation. Will hopefully answer a lot more of the potential questions that you might have. And it does describe in a very, very visual detail what some of these proposals might look like. So Andy?
Thank you, Sam. Yes, and I saw a question. I answered a question. I'm not sure if I answered it privately or send it to all. Asking if playgrounds will be updated. Yes, the entire site, including the ground plane, fields, hard courts, playgrounds are being looked at. As we look at the facilities.
And also we are in the process of upgrading playgrounds as we speak, and some of you may have noticed that through different sites throughout the district. But we had an audit completed in in two thousand sixteen seventeen school year for all of our playgrounds. And all thirty one sites that have playgrounds will be addressed at some point or another. Because as we know, this master plan is, it could be five to ten years, so we need to upgrade before that. So we're currently working on that. We're as part of our deferred maintenance plan and you may even see next week when we present our deferred maintenance plan to the board. Some of those projects that you may be waiting on.
Great. Okay, so I'll carry the presentation forward while I'm speaking. Some of my other colleagues on the line may be answering the questions that continue to be rolling in, or maybe I'll happen to answer them here. So a little bit of preamble before we get to the diagrams themselves. I do want to describe what will happen next, what will happen after tonight. After tonight's meeting, these school site diagrams will then live at the school sites. And we would like to get as much engagement and feedback on these diagrams as possible. So each school site has a school site committee. You may be here as part of one, you might not. If you're not here as part of a school site committee, please contact your site principal. And they'll be able to fill you in as to how you can participate and access the plans to be able to make comments. So we really want to. So we really want to hear your ideas to improve the campuses. We want to know where we got it right on the plans, where we got it wrong, what did we miss? And when you're looking at these plans through this lens, we'd like you to think long term. Again, this is not a short term COVID world that we're planning for, although we realize that may have some long term implications, but really thinking long term programmatically. How will the facilities help the students and teachers within OUSD five to 10 years down the road? So if you are here on the car, on the call as part of a school site committee member, your role is to reach out to those other members of your community and let them know that the site plans are here and they can, that and can be commented on. So review these master plans with your other committee members, with anyone else, piggyback on meetings that may already be in the calendar. You know, principals coffee, PTA meetings, et cetera. This is a great opportunity to roll this conversation right in with those already on folks' calendar. So you'll have between now and mid February to guard, to gain all of that information. And we'll be providing a packet to principals next week that will include all of these plans assessments. I'll go through that list later, but it will include a follow up questionnaire that can help guide some of these conversations. And then at the end of this process, in about mid February or late February, we'll be meeting one on one with the principals or another school site committee representative to download that information back. We usually kind of start to sketch out some new design solutions right there so that we can help finalize the plans with the school site representative right then and there. So those materials that the principals will be getting will be, of course, the existing and proposed plan in printed version. So you're welcome to meet with, with people or have people comment on the physical plans. Of course, in a, in a self socially distanced manner, maybe they're posted up in the lobby or in the staff lounge. Again, I, I mentioned the principal will be equipped with that questionnaire to help guide the conversations. There will be your site's facility needs assessment, the educational specifications that Sabrina went through earlier, but the full document. So you'll get to really dig into what each space will be designed as. And recordings of all of these meetings will be available on the district's facilities master plan website. So as we get into the diagrams, there's just some things to help you navigate. The solid colors, so rooms with a solid color are ear tag for modernization. So this could mean different things to each campus as each of the campuses some have been modernized or improved recently. Some have not been touched in quite a while. So on varying levels of updating the finishes, the flooring, the walls, ceilings, lighting and technology. A hatch, a colored hatch across a space means that space would be reconfigured to accommodate this new, new program type or new space type. So it's like turning your bedroom into a suite of offices, for example, tearing down walls, adding new walls, et cetera. And if you see a white box with a color outline that denotes new construction, not new portables, new stick built construction. So as we approached each site, this is the last slide, and then I'll get to the diagrams. As we sat down to start master planning each site, we want to make sure we have some ground rules set. So these are the big planning themes that we tried to incorporate into each diagram. So we are building from the district's edge strategic plan vision from 2018. We're implementing those educational specification diagrams, so making sure the spaces are right sized following the state's school facility program square footage standards. We're locating kindergarten, preschool, transitional kindergarten together in appropriately designed and sized spaces around a dedicated play area for those uses. We're incorporating those interior and exterior environments for collaboration that Sabrina mentioned. In tier one sites, we tried to incorporate interior collaboration zones. In tier two and tier three sites, we use the outdoor environments available right next to or in between the classroom rings for exterior collaboration areas. We wanted to incorporate the inclusion model for special education, the pre K program. So including that mod severe classroom on every school site and making sure the other special education programs, the mild to moderate, are not grouped together, but rather inclusive to the whole campus. So the students can be with their peers, taking a look at parking and drop off configurations for parking capacity and drop off flow. And of course, safety and security, creating a secure point of access as admin at the front door. Okay. So with that, we'll be getting into the diagrams. I'll be starting with elementary schools, then K eights, then the middle schools. And I'll be going through fairly quickly. I want to make sure I give you the information without overloading you or moving too quickly. So here we're looking at California Elementary School. This is the existing site. The dashed lines is our symbol for a portable classroom. This is a lunch shelter. But here you can see the existing site administration building here with the drop off circle. The star is the kind of front door or main entry to the campus. We see there's a preschool room over here on this side of admin and the kindergarten rooms on the other side with a couple kindergarten classrooms in standard classrooms. When we look at overlaying all of those big planning ideas, we have grouped kindergarten, preschool and TK classes together in a new building and giving them an adjacent kinder play yard. Admin remains where it is, but the existing building is slated for reconfiguration and expansion. So sizing it right and making sure it meets those ed specs. Just beyond or up of the admin is a central quad. So improvements to that ground area just past that is reconfiguration of this existing building for a media center and learning resource center. So your shared spaces of, you know, library and counseling services, student support. The classroom building wings would remain classrooms, but receive modernization. And in between have large collaboration areas that those adjoining classrooms can utilize. And at the end of each wing and innovation lab, new construction out the back here for your visual and performing arts classrooms with a new kitchen and serving area. And up at the front, reconfiguring the parking and drop off areas. Switching to Cambridge Elementary. See again, the finger wing plans with administration existing right here with that main entry at about the star. When we look at our draft master plan proposal, in keeping admin where it is, but reconfiguring that entire building area, building out new kindergarten classrooms, grouping them together with adjacency to a kinder play yard, improving the outdoor areas between every classroom wing for collaboration, building a new MPR with adjacent VAPA and innovation lab. The other two VAPA rooms in this solution we're showing is being located in, in an existing building, just being reconfigured for visual and performing arts. Media center up front, I believe where the existing library is. And within that building as well, reconfiguring the rest of it for the learning resource center. Now this is the Chapman demonstration site, so it has very unique case where we have three observation rooms, one for upper grade levels, one for the lower primary grade levels, and one at the kinder wing. Oh, and a new parking and drop off area off of Sycamore Avenue, as well as reconfiguring the parking and drop off area along Cambridge Street. Looking at Fairhaven, we see this site has quite a few portables out here on the left. Here's administration in green. And right now, it's a pretty unique design to these buildings, the way the classes are existing surrounding the library and multipurpose room. What our proposal shows is to turn those central shared spaces into collaboration areas that those adjoining classrooms can spill out into. In the, in these two existing buildings, the third existing building would be torn down and replaced with something somewhat similar to this organization that exists elsewhere on campus with classrooms around a collab, but also with a newly built learning resource center and media center. To finish out the kinder area, we've left preschool here and learning links in the existing room, which we received modernization and the rest of kinder TK would be built with that new construction, again, surrounding that kinder play yard. Administration to receive modernization and a new MPR on the other side of the campus with your three visual and performing arts rooms and a new innovation lab with lunch shelter. Moving on to Handy Elementary, zoom in a bit here. Again, finger wing plan. Here's admin, which is a little bit bifurcated administration in two separate buildings. So in the master plan proposal, we're joining administration together with a new, newly constructed lobby in between so that visitors to campus have a lobby to enter to check in before being released to the rest of campus. Reconfiguration for the rest of admin to make sure that is one cohesive building. The existing classrooms would receive modernization. And these two classroom wings would be reconfigured, one for visual and performing arts, one for the learning resource center. On this side of campus with kinder, transitional kinder and preschool would be grouped together, this building so that those uses get the appropriate facilities would be reconfigured around that shared kinder play yard. And this building out here with the library, so expanding that media center just a little bit in this dog leg and pairing it with the innovation lab. And in this case, after school is up front here to have close access to that pickup lane. Moving on to Palmyra. Once again, many portables here. This is a unique site though. Let's see the master plan. So the admin stays the same, newly reconfigured parking and drop off lane to help flow. Newly constructed special education rooms. They have a unique program here for autism and a new kitchen and serving building. Here at this first building wing, it's a reconfigured media center and learning resource center. Just to the left of that is your kindergarten cohort here with a new room for transitional kinder, or it could be kinder or preschool, but that whole cluster of rooms would include modernization, reconfiguration and new construction. The remainder of the classroom wings to be modernized. And in order to not inflate the cost of the master plan too much, because we know doing all of this is not going to happen at once due to funding. We have left VAPA, the three VAPA rooms, innovation lab and after school in portables here and have been able to remove the remainder of the portables with the other new construction on campus. Another improvement to note is of the ground plane, improving the spaces in between those classroom wings for outdoor collab and building new upper and lower play yards up here at the edge of the hard courts potentially. Looking at Sycamore Elementary. Here's administration along Main Street, existing classroom buildings with the portables housing their existing VAPA spaces. The master plan diagram shows admin remaining. This classroom wing taken over for the learning resource center, media center and innovation lab. At this classroom wing, there's a need at the SDC moderate to severe room with workroom. On the other side of campus where those two kindergarten rooms are receiving modernization with newly built kinder and transitional kinder surrounding that kinder play and finishing out that new construction with three newly built VAPA rooms at the hard courts and lunch shelter, building a new building for kitchen and serving. And then a new parking lot with a drop off lane there out at the hard courts along Sycamore Avenue. West Orange Elementary. Swimming in here, again, admin at the center along Bush Street with a drop off lane. I'll just advance to the master plan diagram. Again, as a cost saving measure, we are keeping all of the portables in place. Modernization for the rest of the school with some reconfiguration to accommodate the media center and learning resource center with improvements to the ground plane, collaboration areas, a centralized quad kindergarten play and improvements to an expansion of this drop off lane along Almond Avenue. Lampton Elementary. Here's how it is now. This building here is a two story building, so we show our second floor as kind of hovering off to the side. No, this is not above the houses adjacent to the school. This is the second floor sitting on top of this building. We realize there has been some recent modernization done to the existing school, but as this site in the larger vision would be transformed into a K eight academy, we see some big changes. So some of these changes are really put on here to get reactions from the larger community and know that again, this is a long term, 10 year master plan. So keeping the admin where it is as it is, we are showing currently a new parking lot to the right of it with parent drop off right there at front. The existing classroom wings that would carry back would remain with new building for three VAPA rooms, a large elective and science. Around this quad area, central quad area, this existing building be reconfigured into media center. Excuse me, into innovation labs. And the existing two story building that would be intended for upper grades. Potentially, it would be reconfigured slightly to classrooms taken over for the learning resource center. And just above that, new construction for kindergarten classrooms, preschool TK, your learning links joined with a lunch, by a lunch shelter to a new MPR room with your remainder of necessary classrooms. And to finish out the ground plane improvements, improvements to the play fields, hard courts and play areas. Yorba Middle School. So here is a kind of zoomed in plan where we're looking just at the building core. Existing. Yorba as a K eight magnet could potentially include the following improvements here. I'll start actually by going over to the kindergarten wing. This, these existing buildings here, we've taken over, I'll zoom in just a little bit more. We've taken over these buildings for one, two, three, five transitional kinder and kindergarten classrooms. This has displaced some uses such as attendance for admin, which we have added on as new construction to the existing administration building. Just behind admin is a new construction for the learning resource center and media center. With the existing MPR just above that, new construction for three VAPA spaces, large elective, small elective and reconfigured spaces. I realized they're grouped together here, and that is one comment that we know to look at here is how can we be more inclusive with where we locate this severely handicapped SDC population? But in any case, these diagrams are really here to project the cost and that cost would remain the same of three reconfigured spaces for severely handicap population. Innovation lab paired together with the after school program here and a new classroom wing to make up the balance of what we needed. Potentially, there could be a future gym out here with some possible improvements to the field. Other improvements to this site include expanding the parking areas along Collins and adding a parking lot and drop off zone along Cambridge. This drop off would mainly be in support of these kindergarten rooms. I'm sure the questions are rolling in. Okay, Portola Middle School now. Zoomed in. So we saw this plan shows the entire field. Zoomed in, so we saw this plan shows the entire field area. I'll just zoom in like I did earlier onto the building core. And so Portola Middle School. Here is the existing, here's the administration in light green. Jumping forward to the draft master plan proposal, that administration would stay fairly at the same location, but would be expanded further into that building, looking at reconfiguring a portion of that building to size the admin appropriately. Learning Resource Center would also be an existing building, but be reconfigured as well as for classrooms to pick up the remainder of classrooms needed for the program. At the front here, we have science, small elective, which could be like foreign language, for example, and two classrooms receiving modernization. Looking, just going up of that is the Media Center with Innovation Lab and another large elective that could be the STEAM Lab. Just, I'll say north of that is this classroom wing that would receive reconfiguration to create five classrooms and a small elective room. And up here next to the hard courts, reconfiguring this building to fit in two additional classrooms and they do meet our educational specifications for sizing, if you're wondering, and two changing rooms here. The building in the middle would receive modernization. We see a new lunch shelter here adjacent to the NPR as well as an additional third VAPA space to already exists, but one new classroom to again meet that ed spec of three VAPA spaces. Again, a potential future gym at this site that is not yet planned for. Okay, and finally, we're at Richland High School. So this is an alternative program or an independent study program. So we're really looking to replace like with, like with like in terms of the uses. But what we are toying with here is reconfiguring administration, pairing the Media Center, which would receive modernization with a reconfigured Learning Resource Center. As we look at the classrooms, these existing classroom wings slated for modernization with an expansion of new constructed classrooms to finish out that traditional classroom wing. A new construction for their specialized programs such as the arts, STEAM, have a business tech program as well as support services like the kitchen and serving area with a lunch shelter and that new gym slash NPR that would be shared with the other feeder schools in the area. And of course, improvements to the ground plane with a quad and outdoor collaboration areas and hard courts. Okay, and that wraps up the sites. I'm sure the questions have been pouring in. Can we open it up? Someone who's been checking the chat and you can also raise your hand.
We, oh, sorry, go ahead, Andy.
I was just going to remind our guests that you can raise your hand if you'd like to voice a question. It doesn't have to all be typed out. We'd love to hear from you.
Absolutely, and Scott and Joe and Kathleen and myself have been hard at work to try to respond as quickly as possible to the questions that have been pouring in. I'm going to maybe skip to the very last one. There, there may have been one of our school sites that may have been mislabeled. It is Handy. Andy, do you mind going back to that one? Handy Elementary and the, was it the school, the streets may have been?
Oh.
Yeah, I didn't catch that. Good catch. That's, that's not Catella Avenue, it's Collins.
Okay.
Oh, okay. Sorry about that.
Make that note.
On Handy Street.
On Handy Street.
Yeah, and not Center Drive, but Handy Street, yes.
Well, we have egg on our face. Sorry about that.
Certainly know your community. Thank you for pointing that out.
So hard at the plan, we didn't notice the surrounding street. So good catch. Thank you.
Thank you. And there was a request. There was a request to go over this particular site again. Is that something that we could do, Andy?
You bet. Okay, so I'll back up. Well, the existing, here's the existing plan with admin being a little bit bifurcated in two separate buildings. So I'll just jump to the proposal is to unite the two sides of administration and reconfigure that all as one building, incorporating a lobby for secured entry, so a visitor can check in at the lobby before being released to the rest of campus. These three classroom wings are colored for modernization. This building, existing building up here, remaining two kindergarten classrooms as they are sized correctly with facilities to support kindergarten. But this building would be reconfigured to support kindergarten or as we have it labeled transitional Kinder or preschool group together around that Kinder play area towards the back here while I'm on this side of campus. That Media Center we're showing is being expanded, so existing and then that dog leg of striped patterning would be reconfiguring that space to expand Media Center and pairing it together with a reconfigured Innovation Lab. Jumping to the other side of campus, we have this finger wing being reconfigured for the Learning Resource Center and some more faculty support and this last wing being reconfigured for three VAPA classrooms with storage for PE.
Okay, so thank you, Andy. We do have a few unanswered questions. Hopefully, we've been able to respond to your questions adequately. If not, you could repost a question. You can also raise your hand and we could unmute you so that we can have a direct dialogue. The next unanswered question. This looks like a follow-up to the question about Orange High School. I may ask Scott to answer this one as well. I think the question about arts at Orange was to make sure if Yorba becomes an arts magnet, will Orange High have the facilities and programs to support the continuing arts education that students will likely want to continue as they feed into Orange?
I mean, in terms of the program or in terms of the facilities?
It seems to be asking both, both the facilities and the program. So maybe this is a question for Joe as well and Kathleen.
In terms of the facilities, just as I mentioned, the band room would be updated and we have some, some classrooms that are currently art classrooms that are, could be included in the new, new building that's going to be built as part of Phase Two. So that's art and band. The choir building back in 800, that would be a future project outside of Measure S. And so that would be part of the master plan, yes, but is, is something that's, that's not yet planned out. But it is, it is part of the master plan to upgrade all classrooms, including art classrooms, band, choir and other VAPA.
And I would say from an educational services side, we would continue to support and grow those programs, especially as those students matriculate up into high school.
Great. Thank you, Joe and Scott. The next one, this looks like less of a question and more of a statement. Love the plan for Lampson. Thank you very much. A question regarding Handy. So Handy gets no new construction. You know, as we've mentioned before, this is a, these are conceptual in nature. We will still continue to have dialogue and conversations with the specific school site stakeholders. And so this is the type of input that we value and we would like to hear back from the community. So just this, this is not, not everything here is set in stone. So please continue to ask your questions.
I will add to that too, Sam, that as we're approaching these plans, we also want to be mindful of the cost that will result as an implication of these. So if we're able to make the school program fit within existing buildings, that is certainly our goal, rather than putting new construction on for the sake of new construction, as it of course costs more. Unless there's, you know, seismic, you know, implications to the buildings.
Correct, correct. Thank you for mentioning that, mentioning that Handy is one of the guiding principles from the district to, to lead the way for the master plan, the overall master plan vision is to develop a plan that is actionable as well as realistic. So we probably all realize that there is not an unlimited amount of funds to accomplish everything that needs to occur right now. But certainly, the district is very open to have this type of dialogue so that we can help identify what the priorities are needed for each of our sites. Let me see, the next question. Okay, so for high school specific questions, will there be a meeting like this for high school sites? If so, do you know when? Thank you.
I can answer that. We, we have an ongoing dialogue with the community on the high schools as part of Measure S. We went through, like I mentioned, a complete master planning process in 2015, 16 and 17 to get the plans ready for the sites and get them DSA approved, which are currently, you know, under construction right now. So in the future, I'm sure there will be meetings about the high schools at this to kind of reiterate the master plan every five years. That usually gets done. So I would say in the next couple of years, we would be potentially looking at some kind of reboot of that plan as well.
Great. Thank you, Scott. I believe there is a follow-up from John Rodriguez. It has never been touched before. I believe this is referring again to Handy and hopefully we've, we've been able to answer that question. From Leanna Sears, I saw there were potential gym locations for Portola and Yorba. Do we know what the parameters are for if, when those will be built? As we've touched on previously, the master plan currently identifies the needs for each of the site, but it does not identify when these may be implemented. So that, that would be the next step for this process.
And going back to just being responsible with the dollars, you know, we are showing one gym within each feeder area as being part of the facilities master plan cost and knowing that these sites would be nice to have a gym in the future, but to keep the master plan cost from getting way too large, these potential future gyms are being held from the cost estimate, but noted on the plans because it is something that the district would like to pursue if and when that funding is, is available and appropriate.
Thank you. And next question from Kami Canyon. Does the addition of a K eight IB program allude to a new IB program at Orange High School? Joe or Kathleen?
Yeah, I would, I would say at this time, we're looking, we're continuing to build out our early college academy at Orange High School. So our vision is that these students would have the opportunity to go to that early, early college academy with a lot of IB related classwork that they could complete within that. And I think that answers another question, but Kathleen wants to answer any more of them.
And that's totally correct. The vision is, is no, we would not add the IB program as a high school component. The kids would transfer into the, the Orange Panther, the dual college academy. And also, we do have an extensive nationally acclaimed Avid program at Orange High School. And we have to remember that the tenants that foster IB are very similar to the tenants within our Avid program.
Great. Thank you, Kathleen and Joe. Let's see, next question from Katie. I'm sorry, Zeke. I understand Yorba music feeding into Orange High School, but the Lampson IB program feeding to Canyon High School, how would students get there? It seems inequitable.
And the, the goal would be that the Lampson students would feed into Orange High School. So they would continue again the program, but they would continue it into the, the college academy.
And I think a follow-up is Kathleen is, what if they want an IB diploma?
If they wanted an IB diploma, then yes, they would have to go to Canyon High School. They could not continue that in a, in Orange High School if we do not have that program.
Okay. Thank you very much, Kathleen. That currently was the last question and just a quick time check. We are at 7:36 currently. We do apologize again for the late start. So, oh, we could hang on for just a few more seconds if there are any last questions the audience would like to submit or again, you do have the functionality to raise your question and we can unmute you so we can have the direct conversation. So we'll give it a few seconds here, maybe a minute.
Now, I'll take this opportunity to also mention that on the district's facilities master plan website, following up with all the, you know, this is the third of four town hall meetings that we're holding and it's certainly a large amount of questions have been asked. So the district will be preparing, will be compiling all of these questions and formatting a Q and A sheet to hopefully cover all of these topics that have been brought up throughout these four town halls.
Great. Andy, there is a, another question here regarding, will there be student wellness centers for the middle schools?
The Learning Resource Center is meant to act or serve that function as well. If there are sites, there's one site and it's in a different feeder area that has a wellness center function currently existing and that's being maintained. But as far as looking at the ed specs, that Learning Resource Center is really meant for all students on campus to utilize the counseling, you know, resources. So that is, at this point, the intention for the Learning Resource Center in regards to wellness.
Great. Thank you.
It includes what a wellness center would, the psychologist, the speech, those, like Andrew mentioned, the quiet room or the unwinding room, those type of things are all be kind of the wellness center function, but we just call it the, the learning center. Right?
Yes.
Just different labeling.
Yes. So I think we will take maybe our last two questions for the evening. Again, we, we do want to be mindful of everyone's time and schedule tonight. So perhaps this one would be for Joe and/or Kathleen. Since Lampson is already avid, why switch to IB when Orange High doesn't have IB?
Well, it wouldn't be so much switching. All of our elementary schools in the district have been avid trained. So those avid strategies would continue because we want to continue to create a college-going culture in all of our, our schools. So I would say that the addition of IB allows students that global concept and additionally brings languages into both the elementary and middle school.
Correct. And we want to continue a strong avid program at Lampson because they do have a great program because those kiddos can go to Orange High School and they can continue within our avid pathway, which again, like I said, is nationally acclaimed.
Great, thank you. I think maybe we have time for one last question and I know there's a couple more here that are coming in. The district will be, and many of you are probably aware, the, the, this presentation is being recorded and it will be posted on the district's website for, if you would like to view it again. And the questions will also be recorded and the district and our team will also be taking the opportunity to respond to all of these questions and posting them as well. So maybe the last question that we ask tonight is, would next week's meeting explain how the dual immersion programs roll into this new plan concept? would next week's meeting explain how the dual immersion programs roll into this new plan concept? Again, Joe and Kathleen.
I can answer that. The, the dual immersion meeting next, we have one coming up next Thursday at 5:00 PM. And the purpose of that meeting is really to explain the current K-12 matriculation patterns. So in terms of these proposed plans, these are just proposals. None of this has been solidified or voted on. So I would say the, the meeting next Thursday is going to be the current K-12 matriculation patterns.
Thank you, Joe. So again, thank you everyone for attending tonight's town hall meeting. Would Dr. Hanson or Mr. Rivera or Mr. Harvey, would you like to make some closing statements for tonight?
Yes. Thank you very much, LPA for facilitating this evening. And thank you to our board members who were with us. And I know Ms. Moffett had to drop off due to some technical issues, but I wanted to make sure everybody knew that she was with us for the majority of this session. And thank you to the board members who stuck with us. And I know that they're taking note of all the comments. I do want to say one thing about the International Baccalaureate Program at Lampson and providing that opportunity in the Orange High School area. It is to expand that opportunity. And if down the road, we want to engage in a diploma program at Orange High School, there would be an analysis into that to see if it was possible. But again, in the district, we do have a diploma and a CTE recognition of IB at Canyon High School at this time, but that doesn't preclude us from researching that in the future if there's great interest because we always want to meet the needs of our students. Again, this is a vision for the future. It includes ideas and goals for what the future would look like. You know, 21st century educational environment in Orange Unified, offering all kinds of opportunities for students to excel in their talents. And so we're really pleased with the plan, knowing that it's going to go through a process. We're now going to go out to the school sites. It's going to be posted on our website. There'll be opportunities to continue to give input and eventually this will go to our Board of Education in a study session. They'll continue to give input and then they'll finally adopt the plan. And then the plan is contingent upon timelines, funding and other variables within the community. So they may not, not every pupil of this may be adopted. So thank you for your participation. We appreciate you taking your time this evening. We're sorry that we were a little bit late. Mr. Rivera or Mr. Harvey, you want to close out?
Yes, I have some comments in closing. Maintaining improving school facilities is a daunting task and provides a litany of challenges. Our district is over 700 acres in total. So if you compare us to Disneyland, we're about three and a half times the size of the Disney property. The long-range master plan will provide a laser light focus on facility priorities and needs. Which in this instrument is also going to be vital to us in pursuing external funding opportunities to fund the projects that we're talking about tonight. Community and parent input is paramount in providing our students the best learning environment that they are entitled to while being fiscally responsible. Thank you for your participation tonight and we welcome your comments and continual support as we complete this vital document. I want to thank our facility team and the commitment, the collaboration from our experienced consultant, LPA. I appreciate the support of our governing board, Dr. Hanson and the administrators who are here tonight, participating in tonight's discussion. We will be providing access to the charts and graphs. Under normal circumstances, we would have boards available for parents to look at staff. But in, under this environment, we have to make sure that we practice social distancing. So we're going to figure out some opportunities and strategies of how we can provide you access, whether it be electronically. So then that way you can see the plans at each school site. Mr. Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Rivera. I would just add that the next, in the next steps, we want to make sure that everybody has the information. I really, really apologize about our, our being tardy tonight. And I want to make sure that those that may have dropped off at the beginning get the information. So if you could, you on this call could share with those that the district will be providing these, this recording. We will be providing opportunities for feedback similar to the chat in some kind of Google form or some kind of feedback form that'll allow the community to give their feedback. We don't want to miss out on those opportunities. And although it's only six, seven minutes, we understand that that could be a time that could be, be crucial. So please spread that on that we really want to make an effort to include everybody that, that, that wants to have a say in this master plan. So thank you so much. Have a good evening and stay safe.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.